Welcome to the meeting to order and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome everyone. We'll begin as usual with public comment at the podium in the center aisle here. We also have a sign-in sheet. If you will please just give us your name so that we might spell your name correctly in minutes of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Yes, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom Hubbard. I am the resident of Killingworth. We all know that I also am president of the Public Board of Ed. However...
Can we hear? Your audio may not be working as well as with... It's not you, Tom.
Hey Jim?
Yes?
The podium mic appears to... I probably broke it during my presentation.
Yeah.
Is that any better?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm Tom Hubbard from Killingworth, speaking as Killingworth resident tonight. I am also the chairman of the local committee for HKMS 17. I'll be speaking to you in that capacity later. But right now I'm speaking as resident of Killingworth. I want to start out by saying that I understand the concerns of the Hattam residents and the emotions that's involved in what they've been talking to you all about over the past many, many months. I get that. I really do. I also want to mention that in the two years I've been involved with the building community, I've had the good fortune of getting to know you all and watch how hard you work. And there can't be any harder elected position as a volunteer in town. There just can't. I remember going to the public presentation of middle school, the information session, and I watched Howard Theory and Suzanne Sacks stand up there for a couple of hours and do a very professional job, answered every question. Fantastic job. I see this is not just an issue for Hattam, Yggdrasil. It's a district-wide issue. I understand the population in Hattam is basically going to be flat over the next 20 years. It's projected to be flat. While Killingworth is projected to lose 27% of its population in the next 20 years. Big difference. Very big difference there. So that's why I say this is not a Hattam issue. It's a district issue. And I would say that of all the people that you've seen come to these meetings, 150, 250 attendances then, that represents about 2% of the population of the two towns. So you heard a lot of voices, a lot of loud voices, but you didn't hear from a lot of people here. You only heard from about 2%. The other 98%, I think are real happy with the job that you're doing. And I would just ask you, if you please, if you made the right decision, please state your voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board? And if you could just sign in so we have your name, please. Thanks.
She'll sign in for me.
Okay.
So my name is Diana Fucy, and I'm here for a totally different reason than everybody else is probably here for tonight. I'm here because of my daughter's education. It's failing in the school system. It's been failing since she was in middle school. My daughter Olivia has epilepsy. She's had five before's. She's had an IEP in place for years. I've had meeting after meeting. She's gotten additional help in school where she could. She's now in the high school. She is a freshman. Olivia's PPT is not being followed correctly. I've had meetings on the phone with her special education teacher, who told me that now that Olivia's in school, she is pretty much on her own. She is not on her own. She has an IEP in place that is supposed to be taken care of by this school. She's not getting the assistance that she deserves to have. I requested an immediate PPT this week. I asked that at some time last week because I had to hire someone to come with me. And unfortunately, she couldn't be with me this week because she was away on a conference. I begged them to make it for last week when she would be here to help me get through this meeting. They told me that it wasn't sufficient enough time to get a team together to have a meeting with me and my daughter. So now I'm going into a PPT on Friday by myself after spending money out of my own pocket to hire someone to be with me that can't be. I don't know what's going to happen in the IEP. My daughter comes home from school crying every day. She gets up crying every day not wanting to come here. Olivia was assaulted by a boy in this school last week. I was told that there wasn't enough evidence to punish him. I spoke to the state trooper, who pretty much convinced me not to press charges against this boy. I am worried about my daughter's safety in this school. She is being bullied daily. And I don't know what to do as a parent to keep her safe here. This doesn't have to do with the school that's closing in town. This doesn't have to do with the budget. This has to do with my daughter's safety and her education in this school. In the fall, I had words with a cheerleading coach and was banned from this school for the fall season. I was told that I was not allowed on the property to drop my daughter off or pick her up from football games at night, but yet wanted her to walk to the middle of Little City Road to meet me. That is a safety issue that I had to hire an attorney for to get them to allow me to drive on the property, but yet I wasn't allowed in the school without written permission at least 24 hours in advance unless there was an emergency with one of my children. I need to know what this school is going to do to change. This isn't about the awards that we get as a school. This is about our children's educations that they're not getting. I could have Olivia tell you the entire story of being assaulted last week. She knows it vividly and cries every night. I don't want to go to work because I don't want to leave her here. I am a single mother. I work two jobs to take care of my children on my own. And I go to work every day and cry and worry about what is going on in this school while she is here. Her special education teacher brought her into a private room twice with the doors closed and screamed in her face until she cried, telling her... Telling her that she wasn't worthy, that she wasn't a good student, and that all the compliments that she had given her in the past, she was taking back because she didn't feel that she deserved it. The teacher, of course, denies this. Poor she would. And the day after this all happened, two days after, she called my daughter into a room for a second time and shut the door and asked two teachers to leave their room and tried to convince my daughter that she did not do what she was accusing her of.
Ma'am, I apologize for interrupting, but I have to limit you to five minutes and you have about one minute left.
That's fine.
She's got my time.
And Howard, why don't you pay attention, sir?
Howard, don't pay attention because him and I have had words in the past.
Excuse me.
That's in the case of the notes. I am paying attention. I'm taking down everything you say.
It doesn't matter. I understand he's listening. It doesn't matter who's looking at me. I know you're all listening.
I'm just trying to...
I get it. How do I keep my daughter from not being assaulted again? Or bullied because everybody's blaming her, telling her that it was her fault she got assaulted? And this boy is running around free? My heart is broken. I don't know what's going to happen to any other girl he gets his hands on. And I'm not saying his name because I didn't press charges on him. Because you know what? I don't want that boy's life to be ruined forever as a pedophile because it was sexual assault in the fourth degree. My daughter stands here and cries in front of you all because no one believes her. I believe her. She was asked by that boy if anybody was out in the hallway watching or listening. She looked and said no, and he grabbed her until she screamed and he let her go. And when she ran out of that room, there wasn't a soul in that hallway. But yet they say that they have witnesses, that no one heard her screaming. She is a victim of sexual assault, whether you believe it or not.
Ma'am, I really do apologize, but I am going to have to ask you... I'm sorry. Go ahead. Continue.
I want you all to understand this is not about what's going on in this town, the school closing, and everything else. The blue ribbon school, this is not a blue ribbon school as far as I'm concerned. My daughter's safety is in jeopardy. And I want to know what this school is going to do to protect her? Or do I have to pull her out of the school and figure out how to homeschool her with money I don't have to homeschool her? Do I change schools? I didn't move to this town so that I would have to drive her somewhere else to go to school. I moved to this town because of the school district. We're talking 18, 19, 20 years ago, when I thought this was the place my daughter should be. Both of my daughters, one who graduated early and is graduating this year and going on to college. I dealt with bullying in the middle school with this child. And now this. I'm begging you to open your eyes and look at what is going on in this school district and give our kids the education that they deserve and that we want them to have. I don't care how many awards you get. I don't care how many ribbons you get. I care about these kids being safe and getting an education to move on to college. That's what I care about. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I apologize if I rushed you at all.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Barrett Avatella. I grew up in this town. I lived here since I was about four years old. My brother, my sister, we all grew up here. Same story that you've heard over and over again. Parents moved here, great school, yada, yada, yada. I'm not saying don't redistrict. That's fine. What I'm saying is, hold on to AGS. The town values the property at $4.4 million. You have not, as far as I know, released any assessment on the elementary school slash property that it sits on. So when we hear that there is potential for the parcel to be sold at $650,000, you can understand why we would be upset because it's not about getting top dollar. It's about getting a worthy value for the property. Redistricting is failing in Old Sabre. Redistricting is failing in Middlefield. Hold on to the school. If the redistricting doesn't work, then we have a school to fall back on. Howard said it would cost $70,000 to mothball it for a year. Mothball it for a year. Mothball it for two. Go back, revisit that value, revisit another offer. But to offload it at this point in time, I feel is irresponsible. And then when it comes to more people moving into town or no people moving into town, absolutely we can settle that off if Burr fails. Because as I knew last week, there was a leak in the library and children had to be removed from it. Are any of you aware of that? Have any of you heard that? Okay, so the modular classrooms, which everybody claims is fine. My friend's child is in one of them. They claim they are constantly leaking. There are constantly buckets head collecting water. Don't know if that's at current state, but as of a couple weeks ago, it was. I don't want to have to put on a multimillion dollar addition to Burr or Killingworth in five years if we have an insurgence of people. Whatever... Whatever... You guys are going to do what you want to. You've probably already all made your decisions. What I'm asking you to do is just hold on to AGS. Hold on to it for five years, hold on to it for two years. It doesn't matter. It would be worth it to keep it instead of having to put a multimillion dollar addition or multimillion dollar renovation onto either of the elementary schools left behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Katie Pactor. How are things doing? I'm actually speaking on behalf of Jeff Sturgis, who wrote a letter to you guys earlier today. I just wanted to read it for those who may not have been included and also for the audience here. He writes, "I have been outspoken in opposition to the restructuring you've been pursuing. The reasons have been well stated by myself and many others. We have been asking you to pause this for one year to address those concerns. So far, your position is against that backed up by your question of what will that year accomplish? It's a fair and reasonable question." I've given that a lot of thought and I will try to answer this question for you. "I truly believe this process began under pressure to reduce expenses and that savings would be passed on in the form of lower taxes. In Hattam, there has been extensive unrest over the annual budget. Some is justified, but a lot of it, I think, stems from failure to understand what the budget buys. Using last year as an example, very few understood that the marginal increase actually included a line item to fund the capital account. Although that equates to a higher budget, it was not wholly due to higher expenses. It was a responsible financial move to save for the future. Throughout the restructuring process, more and more people are learning what that budget buys and are seeing greater value in the number even if they still don't like it. From the outset, there were perceptions on the extent of the numbers that closure would provide. Now, as more work has been done, those perceptions are getting turned into realities and those realities are at odds with desire of residence. So I see three large problems outside of the much-stated opposing points to restructuring. That individually and certainly collectively will limit and possibly prevent the success of your plan. Two of these problems aren't caused by the restructuring, but the ensuing dialogue has brought them to light and they will have a profound impact on it. The first problem is that of a huge disconnect between the VOE residents and elected leaders, especially those of Hattam. Regardless of how we have arrived here, I think you can all agree that your plan has created a huge amount of displeasure, not only with content, but how it has been carried out. This is eroding the public support, which will be required for any activity you will need to address for the foreseeable future. The second problem is that of the environment at HKMS, the middle school. On two occasions, a former employee, Heather Paugh, has addressed you during public comment. On the first occasion, December 4th, she described the morale and employment culture the teaching staff has with the administration. She also provided hard research data, directly refuting information that Superintendent Theory gave to you about offering exit interviews. On the second occasion, February 26th, she briefly addressed the type of behavior the staff and students are forced to manage on a daily basis. Some parents have stated support of this information. Heather is a current resident and a parent with a vested interest in the success of whatever the future holds for our schools. I hope you all would give her statements serious thought and not brush them aside as merely a disgruntled former employee. The third problem I witnessed at the last meeting is out of time. In the ending portion of the meeting, you all spoke needing to meet this, to discuss the RFP and how that fit, how to fit that need in with the current obligations you have in March. In the SCP meeting, I listened to you trying to meet a timeline of disseminating information to the public and in ascertaining bus run details. As I stated that meant, and I reiterate here, that dialogue is proving our case to pause this process. This is important work and it is owed the time of due consideration. Failing to give that additional time proves the case that this isn't being carried out as well as it can be. That will further erode any confidence the community has of the VOE and that will have consequences for years beyond your tenure. So what do I think you should do to address these issues and why? I love how his mind works. "I offer the following solutions. They are my ideas and suggestions and mine alone. Although presented in order, they really would need to happen concurrently. First, stop the process. Stop the restructuring of HKMS and keep AGS operating for at least one year. This builds the time required to address these problems and shows the community that you are listening. Second, since HKMS is going to be the centerpiece of this, fix the problems there. Begin with a meeting between the VOE, either collectively or in a subcommittee, and the teaching staff and unions. Do not include administration at this meeting. Create a document signed by each party that allows everyone to speak freely to identify problems and solutions. De-identify the statements to compile a database of the problems and solutions. Then, hold a meeting with the administration and present the data to them. The superintendent and his administration work for you, the Board of Ed, not the other way around. Develop a plan to fix any identified problems and continue those types of meetings to ensure the plan is being executed with success. This will accomplish the task of rebuilding staff support for the administrative demands that will certainly be needed for the success of any future plan. Third, establish a community action group to look at the problems and realities we face and ask for creative solutions to these problems. Include the new state environment for education in these discussions. Madison has currently established the tri-board facilities working group to accomplish this very task. It includes members of the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen. They also permitted to public input sessions and documented... Excuse me. And documented... And documentation to publish those results. Another option was stated by Liz Bizzazi in public comment on the February 26th meeting. She presented a roadmap to be used for the exact type of decision that we face in our district. And he has a source for that. An initial possible idea for RST 17 would be to put a question for questions on the upcoming budget referendum, asking residents about school closure and restructuring to establish a basis of support for a direction. I may be wrong in my assessment, but in watching this grow, I only see increasing opposition to this plan, not the support that you say you have. I've tried to look for it in conversation with others and I just don't hear it. As elected leaders, you need to identify the desires of your community and act on their behalf, not on your personal beliefs. This may or may not change the ultimate outcome, but it will achieve an outcome that is supported by the community. And that support will only enhance the success of any work that needs to be accomplished on this or any future decision. In conclusion, I hope the problems I've identified aren't completely new information to you. My hope is that you agree that these are fundamental problems outside of the restructuring but are intrinsically linked to or any of, to its or other plan's success. The solutions I present are merely ideas and I hope form a basis of thought to pursue a community-supported agenda. I think that is where your plan is truly lacking. The data used for this, regardless of my beliefs about it, indicated to you the ability to close a school. It did not indicate which one or how to go back. That decision required much more input than just capacity and numbers and further input was never pursued or solicited. Stopping the process to garner that support will have minimal financial impact, but exponential impact to your constituents. Those constituents who elected you provide the support you need to accomplish anything, whether popular or not. Getting the support of all stakeholders in this will change it from an unpopular force directive where people look for problems to a supportive live-action plan... Where people... Sorry. To a supportive live-action plan where people look for solutions. Above all, our disagreements, I think... I think that should be a foremost goal forming the basis of success. I also think that initiating a pause with a plan for the interim time period would be a win for both sides. I hope we can agree on these points. And as always, I thank you for your time and service to our community. Sincerely, Jeff Sturgis, Hattam resident and here.
Thank you. I think we have time for just one more speaker.
Thank you. Maybe I'll have time for one more. We only have a minute. Robert Rimmer, Killingworth. I'm also the board of finance in Killingworth. I've heard a lot of talk about pause recently. If anything, this is probably overdue. He's got 10 years of steady enrollment. I have 500 students lost over 10 years. I applaud the efforts you're taking and again, if anything, I think they're delayed because this has been a long-term process. You can see the numbers put out today. 2,500 students total in 2007. 2,548 in 2008, down to slightly over 2,000 now. A comment, and I'm sure we'll... As Superintendent Theory said, in our upcoming workshops, we'll explore this and find this out. I also applaud the, it's like $1.2 million of savings that have been identified in the budget. I've been through lots of meetings over the last few years with the joint boards of Hattam and Killingworth, and I've heard nothing but a steady grumbeat of, what were the expenses? Give us belief on our tax burdens, and I applaud you for doing that. I'm curious to find out as we go through the workshops about some of the expenses that are added on this year, but we'll explore that, I'm sure, in coming days. The other thing I would say, a lot of people have said, well, we're lifelong residents of the area. I can't say that. I moved here from Arkansas. I've lived another complete life since I've moved here. But west of the Hudson, I want to give you guys as much credit as I can, but I can give you full credit for innovation because west of the Hudson, centralization of educational centers has sort of deregured. And it's not something, I wish I could say you're on the forefront, but you're not. It's something that is common throughout the United States. And it's also something that's more and more common among our neighbors. I think some of our... I think some of our, you don't have to look too far away, some of our very close neighbors in Madison, Killingworth, are facing some of the same enrollment and population pressures that we are. And just another sort of rhetorical question. I wonder about, and maybe we can explore this in upcoming meetings as well, I wonder about the M V R analysis. I know there are limits as to how much a budget can be decreased. I remain hopeful after Superintendent Theory's presentation tonight that there could still be an opportunity for a less decreased this year. I think there may be an opportunity with closure of a school and with enrollment decline to address the M V R analysis, but perhaps we could explore that as we go forward in the workshops. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll move on with our agenda and move to the approval of minutes. Item three, they're in your packet, from the meeting on January 22nd. Can I get a motion to approve them as presented? Kathy, you making a motion?
To accept this.
Okay, second? Anyone want a second?
I did.
You did, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any further discussion?
During the...
Buy a show of hands, all those in favor? Any vote? Report from our student representatives, I thought I saw.
They're here.
They're here, good.
So we just have a few things at the high school. Hello. We just have a few things going on at the high school. We have our new musical, The Wizard of Oz, which will be May 2nd through 4th, and we're having a real dog, so that's kind of cool. Also, there will be a student council held blood drive here at the high school on March 22nd, if anyone's interested in doing it.
Last time we were here, we announced one of HK's biggest fundraisers, Mr. HK was going on last month.
Who won that? Who won it?
And that was run by the class of 2019. This is the first time that a student class has run it without the help of the T V department and it raised just over $1,700 for our class and that will help with end-of-year activities and take a burden off of some kids who can't afford some of the benefits that you experienced at the scene.
That's great. Thank you very much and congratulations. Arnis, I'd love to get a motion if I could to move up item 7A of your old business, the report from the Public Building Committee. All in favor by a show of hands? Okay, as you saw, Tom Horgody is here, as is our project manager Doug Rogers, and Tom will do the rest of the introductions.
We also have here our architect, Grant Curtis from D T C and Ken Stulton from M J Daly, who is the boiler contractor. I don't think we're going to get it, we shouldn't get to it, but indeed we have to answer questions. We have two things for you tonight. The first is a, an invoice from M J Daly in the amount of, I'm sorry, in the amount of This was unanimously approved forward to this board at our meeting last week at the building committee. Again, the reason we're here is it's over our spending limit. It's money that's already been earmarked for the project, the money is there, they're just invoicing us for work already done. The second item is a change order from M J Daly and that is in the amount of $146,342.58. That's $1,000 lower than the bottom line says because we have to remove the contingency. This is a change order to move some of the electrical panels on the boilers because we're having some trouble with clearance and being able to open the, open the boiler doors. Doug, our project manager, got back to work this week and they're making a favorable progress. The building committee also approved forwarding this to the board for, we heard, consideration, approved it unanimously with the caveat that by approving this change order, it does not waive our right to pursue remedies or claims for anything we identified that may have contributed to this order or any other components of the project. So, for now, that's what I have. Take questions.
Tom, we may have to amend our minutes from the building committee because the number that I think we agreed on was not to exceed $146,106, but if that is incorrect, either as of the building committee meeting or as of tonight, we'll just need to straighten that out.
Okay.
But the building committee approved it at $146,106, I believe. Well, that's what...
Doug, is this different from your fellow?
The only difference is $1,000. That was the number that was produced. There was a contingency line that said $1,000, so subtract $1,000 and that's what that's...
And so, Tom, the number you're offering is 146,352?
146,342.
342.
And 58 cents.
Okay.
That's correct.
It's just a discrepancy in the minutes of the building committee, which I will amend. But if...
This is the same document.
Well, we can fix that, but the number for our purposes tonight is the $146,342.58. So, Board members, Tom and Doug are here, as are the Daly and D T C representatives, to answer any questions that you might have about any aspect of this. I think, I know that Doug will want to point out that this project in the boiling room is 95% complete and so this is the work, there's work left to do in addition to the work associated with this change order, but we are nearly to the finish line of this project. But if you have any questions about this particular request, this would be a great opportunity.
Just as one thing, Joel, we're at a really critical point here because of the time of year, because of the weather. I'm told that if we move out of the heating season and the building no longer calls for heat, it's going to be very difficult to get these boilers up and running and balanced. We do have a separate commissioning agent that's going to commission these boilers. I'm told by M J Daly is, there's a lot of work they have to do while the building's calling for heat to make it all work, make it all work right. So that's one component. If we can't do that, there is a possibility we could kick this into the next winter. Whether that would affect our bonding, I don't know. I have no idea. The other issue is, we do have three boilers right now that are up and running. We've had trouble with them, some of them are dropping offline for different reasons. And the reason they're dropping offline is they're being taxed to their maximum ability. Those three boilers aren't supposed to be heating the entire building all the time. So, really desperately need those other three boilers to be installed as quickly as possible. We do run the risk of damaging them if we keep running them at this capacity.
Tom, is it still about four weeks, four to six weeks worth of work?
I'm sorry?
Is it still liable for about four to six weeks worth of work?
Correct.
Because I thought they said something about like four weeks of piping work or something like that.
They said about a month of piping work.
Okay.
I have a question. Is this change order the mistakes that happened with the project with the, I'm a little confused, with the panels that couldn't open?
Yes.
Is that what this is about?
That's right. That's correct.
Tom, can I get clarification? Is this, so this change order is being put in at $146,000 and change? Is it my understanding that that's an estimate of what the work will, of the guy's work?
Thank you.
And, but that the final billing isn't going to be done on a normal change order basis? Normally you would, you would vote for, normally you'd approve a change order if you did and that's how much you get billed. That's, in this case, because of the various parameters around how we got where we are, the engineering company and M J Daly have both agreed that this can be done on a time and materials basis where we will, we won't be paying normal change order rates, it'll be strictly the materials and the time it takes to do the work as logged in by M J Daly, but as validated and verified by our engineering company. And, and this, this dollar figure represents a ceiling, a max, that it not to exceed, but the actual time and materials could come in less. It's a way of validating that this work actually is done the way it needs to be done with only the materials and time it needs to be done. Is that, that is this part of, right about that?
That's correct. So that $146, $146,000 number is the maximum we'll be charging, okay? Yeah, it could be, it could be less. Will it? I don't know.
But it'll be validated in that time and materials, not in just...
But it won't, it won't be more than that. And that, that should take us to the very end of this component of the project which should be done. And I can tell you, M J Daly wants out of here as much as we want him out here. We want this thing done. Over, complete.
With respect to, Doug, I just heard that there's, that in order to balance the boilers, sort of get them working properly, that we have to be within the heating season.
Right.
As you call it, that actually makes sense to me. So, we approved this, what is that timeline? Are they in this, can, what's that date? What's their expected, assuming we're in heating season? They are in the building tomorrow.
The best answer I can give you, Joel, is, is my sense is they're going to get in here, they're going to throw everything they have at it, they're going to get this thing done while it's still cold, but to put a magic date up on the board, I don't have that.
Can you ask that?
I just want to know if it's possible.
Yes.
Is it a possibility or are we just...
If it's not, just say, right?
No.
We're only here in a month and saying it's not too warm.
Four to six weeks is what it's going to take us to get this thing done.
When can you start? Tomorrow, next week, in two weeks? When can you start?
We're starting now, so yeah, no, we can start.
Like you have your tools with you or you can go?
I do.
Just so the Board members know, commissioning is always a multi-month process. And boilers are installed all times of year. You do need, as part of any commissioning or balancing, a, a part of that that is in the season where you have heavy draw or heavy call. And so, it is best to take care of that at the front end, in this case, because we happen to be in that season, and then you can continue to balance it out over time. Here's the depending commissioner that will take care of that.
So, with that, Pete Williams has been called out for, how, what part of the six weeks?
Part of what? Commissioning is actually a separate, it's not part of this change order at all.
Oh, so...
It's actually a separate contractor we have, a commissioning agent. We hired them early in the process, you always do, because they kind of sit over the top, understand what's being installed, understand the system, so that they're ready to commission it or balance the system.
So, four to six weeks of this change order, then that doesn't have to be balanced?
And then they will start commissioning. Is there any overlap at all?
So we're commissioning...
No, I didn't think so.
So we're commissioning...
No, we're done, it gets commissioned.
They will be commissioning toward the end of April, mid-April.
Mid.
Four to six weeks, four to six weeks is mid-April.
And is the question, is that possible? Is that what you're asking, Kathy?
Yeah.
You can commit, I mean...
I mean, but he won't be on, it's not from the...
There will be, there will be most call after mid-April.
And how long does the commissioning take?
Commissioning actually is a whole process. It takes many months because you actually run it through multiple seasons. You don't want to commission, you do not want to commission your heating system in a moment, say, it's all set, it's all balanced, trust me, you walk away, six months from now it will not be balanced. And so, you want to actually look at the system over a period of time to make sure it's responding appropriately in different conditions, to different conditions. The last building I built, we commissioned over the process of about 11 months.
And my other question?
That's, that's not a hard number, that can be varied, but that's not a 18.
So unless I missed it, where is the story about how we got here? Are we going to talk about that tonight or are we going to talk about that in the next session?
We actually talked about that several numerous times via board meetings related to, and we can't again...
Well, I know the story about the boilers having to be moved.
This is the same, this is the same issue, it's a final part of that. The boiler, the M J Daly actually took ownership of moving the boilers, they moved it, and now we need to get these electrical panels and control systems moved so that we have all proper appropriate clearance systems.
So it's just a continuation of the correction?
It was. If you remember, the original package was closer to $230, $240,000 dollars and this is the remaining $140,000.
I got the question, is there...
Yep. Can I understand what if, what if not, right? What if, what if the four to six turns into six to eight and now we're outside the heating season and rather than, what does that mean? Does that mean for us, does it mean for bonding, does it mean...
Ken, would you, would you mind stepping up here?
Commission, yeah. No, it's a differential. It's a good, commissioning is going to have to continue across the board.
What I'd like you to do is describe the difference between what M J Daly has to do to balance and get these things up and running and what the commissioning agent is actually going to do. The commissioning agent actually comes in again, basically we're all done connecting our pipes, system's filled, everything's operational. Our control system, A B S, how you're operating, how your controls, all comes into play. How we're going to actually move forward if we run over that six to eight week period? Yes. And we're going to end up having to run it to next year? Okay. It's inevitable. I mean, so I'd rather now is to get started right away immediately and try to get this thing done while...
I understand, I understand that that's the one, but so the worst possible is at six and it kind of just, it just sits stagnant.
No, it wasn't said, job's done.
Well, the job's done, but it's not...
Commissioning is actually going to pay for it.
So then it will be done in October, whenever the heating season starts.
So, Doug, did you ask me a crazy question or...
And Doug, if you have something you'd like to contribute, please.
I just wanted to give you an understanding of the commissioning agents who will...
If you do that, I'd like to...
Doug, please turn the mic. Thank you.
I have a big mouth, so I figured you could hear me now.
For the TV audience as well.
So, the reason we hire a commissioning agent is to confirm that the design is what was installed by the contractor. And if they're not able to do that heating and cooling cycle, it doesn't mean that the system's going to stop, it just means that the commissioning agent's going to have to come back later to confirm that it's working in the cooling system, which may be additional cost, but may not. We've extended this job, we extended the commissioning agent's contract for a year, so they're supposed to come back anyways in 10 months to confirm that it's actually operating in the next cooling season. So, we get through this season and we get into this summer season and the cooling season, they'd be coming back anyways to confirm it and we would just have to bring them back if we weren't able to get this initial confirmation done before it gets warm, right?
Them being the commissioning agent.
The commissioning agent will be coming back anyways. I'm talking about M J Daly, if there's anything that they need to adjust, we would bring M J Daly back in the cooling season next year to say, we identified these issues, you need to fix it. They'll have to come back and fix it.
That's, that's what the commissioning agent does on behalf of the district. Okay, so that makes sense to me. And I guess maybe I'm going to ask a question that you may not have the answer to in the day of... How on, ballpark, how often does the commissioning agent do the work they need to do and then something comes up where we need to call back something? The reason I ask that is I'm just a little concerned. If we go into next year and I'm sure M J Daly would like to stay in business, so they're going to get other jobs that are going to start next year, if there's March, and we have to call them off of jobs and that's not very well known.
It's not, it's not going to be that complicated. I mean, really, what they'll find is, the commissioning agent may find that the, the control system isn't speaking to the boiler correctly or there's a set point that wasn't in the sequence, that wasn't, that needs to be adjusted or it dropped out. So they're going to have to have a tech come, it wouldn't be like we have to remobilize that to come in. They have a tech come in who would ident, take the list that was provided by the commissioning agent and then confirm and fix them, and then the commissioning agent would say, all right, great, sign off on it and then we're done. But it's not like we're going to have to bring a whole team back in to move boilers or do anything like that. It's not that at all. It's just to confirm that it's operating as designed in the cooling season, warming season, cooling season.
Is there additional cost to that?
No, it's part of the contract. So they're going to send a guy out, it's not, there's an additional cost for them to come out and do what they need to do to make sure that it's in compliance with the design that the commissioning agent identifies.
Okay.
There's no additional cost. It's already included in the contract.
Doug, while you're standing there, maybe you could just give a quick update on the photovoltaic project, very brief.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
So, I don't know if you've seen it, but there's been some photos floating around the racking system on the school complex. system on the school complex is complete, all of the electrical has been ran, we're waiting on panels. The panels will be arriving on 14th of March next week, and 100% of the panels will be here on-site by the end of March. We anticipate that between March, April, and into May, we should be complete with installing all of the panels, because all of the racking and everything that was difficult to do has been done. So, we're in a good position as far as getting panels.
Thank you.
And then, you know, we can look around us, and see this auditorium, and, you know, this has been a success, we'd like to say, and...
Anything left to do in the year? We have a couple.
We have a few items to take care of, we have some strobes I need to add from the, when this school was built back in the 70s, they put just a little fire, it's not even really a strobe, just a fire light up there at this, so we're going to be putting in strobes to meet the intent of the fire marshal. That's pretty much all that's left, and we're here, and we're lit.
Some of the panels have been manufactured. Some of the panels have been manufactured. They actually missed them?
Yes, yes, yeah. Lit is, the lift is being manufactured, the deposit's been made, and so it will be installed as soon as it's ready.
So, but if we're going to be done with projects, and the only thing that would be outstanding is the taintage at that point?
At the end of what?
The end of May.
Uh, I think there'll be a little bit additional work that's going to have to go, there'll be some witness testing, and so I can't commit that at the end of May, but thereabouts.
And also energizing the PV is also...
Yeah, it's energized, we have to witness test it, we have to bring eversource here, and we have to, you know, go through a process with them to connect to their meter, the ZREC meter, all of those types of things. That will be done at the completion of the paneling system. That's the last step.
Right, so we should have no problem going to bonding, as we planned for it to go. Right? Everything will have been done, everything will have been paid for, and the only thing that's happening is commissioning, and anything associated with commissioning, many of these things is included in the cost.
We have a separate contract with the commissioning agent, which their fees are included as part of the project, so yes. There shouldn't be any additional costs, it should, right? 95%, we don't anticipate any unforeseen conditions to, to come out at this stage. And as well as, there may be something for PV, there's an ethernet, an ethernet connection that may come forward, but it's not a big number. The eversource requires for connection of the, they need to have an ethernet cable connected from their meter to the school, and so there may be some additional for that.
And we have also received our first, we've also received our first reimbursement from the state.
Yeah, we spoke to the state, the state has then reached back out to the district so that we can get this process moving, so that you can get your reimbursements, we're on invoice number seven, and you've got your first invoice reimbursement. And I believe that Michelle Dixon from the state is going to accompany you with the district to, to where we go.
And when do we plan to have our final reimbursement fee? What's the timeline of that?
I don't know. That's, that's high as money. It's a, it's a, the state's running, the state's running on a very unpredictable timeframe right now. I, I can't speculate. I had to call and ask why we haven't been paid five months.
Right, first, which is, Doug, we have outstanding reimbursement?
Yes, we do.
How much do we have for outstanding reimbursement?
We have six. We have, well, we only, we've been paid for the first, the second is in the queue, and they can't put the third in until the second one's paid, so that's the system that we're reviewing right now.
So how much do we have outstanding reimbursement?
I don't have that number.
Do you know the numbers?
No, it's not mine.
Mark, how much is the first? Do we go in magnitude? 600,000 is a full $2 million dollars, what is it?
Ballpark.
As a square, sure, about $600,000, probably.
If there are no additional questions, we can take each of these invoice, well, we can take the invoice first, for $46,550, if we can get a motion to approve it as presented. This is to MJ Daly.
I'll make that question.
Okay. How's that? Any further discussion or questions for Tom?
$146,000.
No, no, this is the $46,550 application, application number six, and it is for...
Too close to the volume.
Any other questions for the project manager or the building manager?
The design is diagrammatic, coordination between contractor and designer.
Okay. James, Paul, Roy, Liz.
They determine that they identified that this space was not suitable as it was originally laid out, and they moved it. That's part of the coordination, it's unforeseen conditions.
Sue. Yeah.
If you paid for 100% design from that year, you paid a fortune, that's how it is. It's a diagrammatic design.
Now, if we could get a motion to approve the proposed change order in the amount of $146,342.58 for the water work that you've described tonight?
Motion to approve the change order from $146,342.58.
And that is a matter of city, Dr. Lloyd, as we...
This is because it's private, you're coming from a bigger engineering, where you do it.
Okay. Again, any further discussion, questions for the project manager or building committee?
They work together to make it, to the design.
Okay. Do you need to call another one, please?
I mean, yes. Peter?
No.
Maura? Yes. Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Brenda? No. I mean, Suzanne?
Now we're trying to finish the job.
Joy?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Tom, Doug, Ray, and Ken for staying with us tonight. I'm Floyd, thank you. Let's move on in the agenda to our today's report, starting with facilities, which was not...